I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I will first start and address this comment to Kevin and to Charlene. Please help me if I do the parliamentary procedure not properly. If I don't do it properly, please help me. I know that you guys are well-versed in it, so I'm asking for your help on that.
Do your best.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. The consent items?
Move to approve. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent items as written. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 That motion carries. We have Boy Scout Troop 227 from St. Mary's, and we have the Scout Masters here. Would you please come up and introduce the boys for this?
Sure.
That's fine.
If you could come to the podium, please.
My name is Nick Palanch. I'm the Assistant Scout Master at St. Mary's Troop 227. And tonight, we got Evan Palanch, Tyler Valomic, Kayden Spencer, Logan Schaefer, and two more that are supposed to be here but not here yet, which are Hunter Samuelson and Tyler Samuelson.
Thank you very much. Welcome, boys. Thank you for coming. We'll move into the scheduled hearing. For the improvement projects, I will open the hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the improvement hearing for the 2013 street improvement project. One second. Make sure this is working. All right. So the purpose of the hearing this evening is to review the estimated or the costs associated with the 2013 improvements and obtain input from the properties. Part of the city's policy is to assess a portion of the street improvements, which amounts to one-third of the total project cost. So 66 percent, or just over 66 percent, is borne by the city, and 33 percent borne by the property owners. This slide identifies the project schedule. If you recall, back in February, the improvement hearing was held. At that hearing, we discussed the projects, the reconstructions, the overlays, and identified more of the components that go into those projects. This evening, we're here for the assessment portion of the project, the actual costs that will be assessed to the property owners. With that pending council action this evening, that would allow construction to begin in June, June or July, and then be substantially complete in November. This graph basically identifies the historical assessment amounts associated with both the reconstruction projects and the overlay projects. The reconstruct -- I skipped one page. The reconstruction projects being noted in blue on the top of the screen. You can see since 2007 to 2013 here, the reconstruction project prices undoubtedly have been increasing. We haven't seen quite the increase in the bituminous or in the overlay prices as signified by the red line. However, if you look at the trend, it also is increasing. This slide basically shows the top six components that make up the street assessments, or the most expensive of the six. And basically, I'll just run through those quick, but it consists of common excavation, which is essentially the removal of the dirt from the street. Class V aggregate is the new aggregate that's installed beneath the pavement, the curb and gutter, the concrete items consisting of also the driveway, and then the bituminous. The schedule associated with the assessments for this project, a reminder notice would be sent out in September of this year. Residents would have the option to fully pay their assessment without interest prior to October 31st of 2013. There are also partial prepayments that are allowed prior to October 31st of 2013 without interest. If residents elect not to fully pay or partially pay a portion of their assessments, the assessments will be included on next year's taxes, with the first payment being due May 15th, and then the second yearly payment being due October 15th. And again, prepayments are allowed, provided that they're in the amount of $1,500 or more. So the first project -- I think I skipped a slide. One second, bear with me. All right. The 1305 project identified on the screen is the Trot Avenue improvements, which essentially consists of an overlay from Industrial Drive to 16th Street. Also included as part of this project are improvements for the pursuit of a quiet zone, which will consist of the installation of concrete medians and improvements to the BNSF So in summary, the projects being considered this evening, or for 2013, consist of reconstruction, and I'll just list those projects for the audience's reference. It consists of Candy Ohi Avenue from 7th to 1st, and then another portion of Candy Ohi Avenue from 15th to 11th. Also included is Second Street Southeast from Wilmer Avenue to Alina Avenue, Sixth Street Southwest from Robbins Avenue to Trot Avenue, and Havana Street Northeast from High Avenue to the north. And then the city parking lot will also be reconstructed as part of these improvements. The overlay program slated for this year consists of 12 roadway segments and is approximately 3.2 miles in length this year for the overlay portion. Includes Trot Avenue.
We're having some -- bear with us. We're having some technical difficulties with the slide presentation.
Back one, please. Trot Avenue Southwest from 28th Street to Industrial Drive, and also 23rd Street Southwest from Airport Drive to Trot Avenue. This portion of the project is approximately 0.9 miles in length, to give you a little bit of a perspective on how much that area actually consists of. The next roadway is identified for overlay, consists of the service drives along trunk Highway 12 East from Litchfield Avenue to Lakeland Drive, and then from Fairing Street to Lakeland Drive. This consists of approximately 0.95 miles, so almost a mile of overlay slated for those The next project, as identified up on the screen, is Third Avenue Southwest and Fourth Avenue Southwest. That consists of approximately 0.2 miles of roadways to be overlaid. This area is out in the Artenblad and Southgate Additions area, 22nd Street, 23rd, 24th Street, 22nd Avenue, and Williams Parkway. That's approximately -- all those streets combined is approximately 0.88 miles in total The other project associated with the city's 1303B project is the 11th Avenue Southeast sidewalk improvements. Essentially, that's a construction of a five-foot walk, approximately 645 feet in length. The Trot Avenue Crossing, we discussed, that's an overlay, and the improvements to the crossing, concrete medians, and rail signal systems. In summary, the total project cost that's going to be for these projects that we've gone through this evening is $3,804,000, approximately. The property owner's share of that total is approximately $1.28 million. So again, the one-third property owner, two-thirds city, split according to the city's assessment Reconstruction cost this year is $70.53 per foot. The overlay cost is $23.91 per foot. One other thing that I'd like to mention is, we have received some calls regarding our state aid street system. As you all know, the city, we are part of the municipal state aid street system through MINDOT. Essentially, what state aid system is, is it's a separate funding mechanism for the city to utilize as part of their reconstruction projects. It doesn't mean that the state pays for all the improvements. So I just wanted to make that clarification. And with that, Mayor Council, I'll answer any questions that you might have, and then pause for public testimony regarding the assessments.
I think at this point, don't run away. I think at this point, we'll have input from the audience if they would like to speak to this. Could you come up to the podium, please?
I'm sorry. If you would come to the podium for the public hearing and just give your name and address, please. Just for the record, thank you.
You're welcome. Jerry Biltis, owner of Jerry's Flooring at 918 Litchfield Avenue, which would be the fairing to Lakeland Avenue overlay, I guess. Just a couple of questions. As far as payment goes, I have store check and store credit card. Is either acceptable to pay in full before the October 31st deadline?
Store check?
Store check. And I guess the second question I've got, I load on installers every day, and we have trucks come in probably four out of the five days of a week. If it's being overlaid, is there any way to know how long that process will take? It'll affect me, I guess.
The overlay process is not as intrusive as the reconstruction process. Essentially, the work will be completed in a linear fashion along the street. Really, access shouldn't be an issue for you whatsoever, and certainly, we can coordinate that with the property owners that have those types of concerns. Really, once the bituminous mat is down and it's rolled, traffic can proceed on it as normal.
Thank you. Did you have a question or a comment?
No, I have something to tell you.
I'll add Jared's statement.
Okay.
For clarity, but maybe I should do that while it's open?
Yes.
Sure.
Because then they could come back up. Their question simply was, on their street, and it would be Candy Ohi Avenue, is a state aid street? And so somebody made the statement that the state would be paying for it, there shouldn't be an assessment. Currently, court cases have been clear in that all municipalities have to have the similar rate for their similar class of property. In other words, all residential within the improvement must have the same rate, all commercial. Both of our rates happen to be the same, whether it's commercial or residential or industrial property, but that need not be. But in this case, some streets are full municipal where 100 percent of ad valorem tax may take it, or some special assessments, no state aid. Some bigger streets, like Candy Ohi Avenue, has some cost sharing with state aid and so forth. Regardless of those funding mechanisms, the rate that each property must be assessed has to bear an equal rate. And so people on Candy Ohi would pay the same as somebody on a small little cul-de-sac and so forth. And you don't discount the assessment on larger streets just because state aid money is attained by the municipal governments.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions, assessments?
No. Did I answer all your questions? Yep, okay.
Hearing done, I'll turn this over to the council. I'll close the public -- no, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for discussion. Do we have any discussion? Councilman Ash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question on the expense of quiet zones. What does that kind of net out costing us to do the quiet zone on Trot?
I'll look at staff, too. I don't recall the exact dollar value associated with that quiet zone. I wanted to say it was in the neighborhood of $68,000, if I remember right.
It was.
That's for the Trot.
Oh, you said seven?
Approximately $68,000, I believe.
$68,000.
I believe that's right.
For that project. Yep.
Okay.
Now, I ask only because I don't know. Is that $68,000 included in the assessment?
The --
Go ahead.
The overlay portion would be included in that assessment.
Correct.
Any further questions? Councilman Dawkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question on behalf of Mr. Biltis and Jerry's Flooring. He says he has trucks coming four or five per day, or every four or five days. Is that what?
Four days out of the five days, I'll have trucks coming to my house. So I'll just come every day.
Yeah, and the indication is we're going to coordinate that. How will we coordinate that with him to make sure that he can get his product?
Councilmember Dawkin, we'll coordinate that by speaking with the property owners along the project. And certainly, if any other property owners who are not here this evening have similar concerns, they can contact City Hall, and engineering staff will make sure to accommodate those requests as best as possible. Again, the overlay process is very simple from a construction standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe you could explain to the public exactly what these quiet zones are going to look like? You know, we hear the term, but what does a quiet zone look? Is it a tunnel, or is it a?
Councilmember Christensen. Essentially, the quiet zones that are being considered as part of this project, basically what a quiet zone does is it allows the city to petition the FRA, Federal Rail Administration, so that the trains coming through town don't blow their horns. In order to do that, since horns are a primary safety device associated with trains, certain improvements need to be constructed at these crossings. Essentially, what they consist of is concrete medians in the center of the roadway. As the gate arms come down to those medians, it prevents cars from essentially skirting the gates, weaving in and out of them to continue on their way in an effort to beat the train. So really, you're not going to notice much difference at the intersections, with the exception of the concrete medians in the center of the roadway.
Is it, are the medians, you know, 12 inches tall, 16, 24, two feet wide, one foot wide? What, just?
The medians will be eight inches high, and the widths vary depending on the location. However, I believe the Candy Ohi crossing is four or six feet in width. I can't recall specifically, but they're not significant.
Okay. And then the snowplow trucks and everything will be able to just zip by them and move the snow opposite.
They would plow them similarly to plowing against a curb, exactly.
Okay, thank you. And then a question for staff. How many resolutions does this take, or motions? Is it one to adopt the assessment rule, and then we need to award all five contracts in one motion, or?
The wording of the contracts would be four, I believe, but for this hearing, it's one action to adopt the assessment rule, if you.
Okay, well, I'll move to adopt the assessment rules.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the assessment rule, and the objections have been resolved, I understand. And so is there any discussion on that? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Thank you. Now we have four more resolutions to do.
Are we doing that here, or are we doing that in Public Works? I guess I'm.
First, it's weird, you ordered the contracts. The contract.
We've got, we have four in finance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Coming later.
They're coming later.
With that, we will move into the.
Open forum.
Open forum. Is anybody scheduled to speak at open forum?
There was one on there, but he spoke during the assessment hearing, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only one.
And then we'll go into the Finance Committee report. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a committee meeting from April 22nd. It seems like a long time ago. The first item on our agenda was public comment, and there was no one there to speak to us at that time. Second item has to do with statutory municipal liability coverage limits. Staff presented details of the current statutory tort liability limits to the extent of the coverage purchased from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. A decision must be made annually whether to waive the limits. If the city does not waive the statutory tort limits, an individual claimant would be able to recover no more than $500,000 on any claim to which the statutory tort limits apply. The total of all claimants that they would be able to recover would be $1.5 million. If the city waives the statutory tort limits and purchases excess liability coverage, a single claimant could potentially recover an amount up to the limit of the coverage purchased. The total which all claimants would be able to recover for a single occurrence to which the statutory tort limits apply would also be limited to the amount of coverage purchased, regardless the number of claimants. Your staff's recommendation to not waive the statutory tort limits at this time, and that has been our policy in the past. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution stating the city will not waive the statutory tort limits.
Motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution stating that the city will not waive the statutory tort limits. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
The next item was a Western Collector financing amended budget, and we're going to have two actions here. It'll be one motion and one resolution. Kathy Aho of Springstead Incorporated explained to us that funds are available through the state of Minnesota's Public Facilities Authority, and it's the acronym of PFA, for the city of Wilmer to obtain WIF grant for a portion of the Western Collector project. By accepting the grant, the city would be required to fund a reserve based on sewage flows and follow additional reporting requirements with PFA. It was being recommended that the city take the WIF grant and proceed with the financing schedule. Current estimates show that this project qualifies for a PFA loan of $1,886,812 and a PFA grant of $763,205. After discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation to accept the WIF grant and borrow the lower amount.
The motion has been made and seconded to accept the WIF grant and borrow the lower amount. Is there any discussion? I have a question. What is WIF?
Steve, can you tell me, can you explain the acronym of WIF?
It's wastewater infrastructure financing or funding.
Thank you, Steve. We had a discussion, and we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
And I would now introduce a resolution to adopt the financing schedule for the Western Collector project. Introduce the ordinance and order a public hearing for May 20th, 2013.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution to adopt the financing schedule for the Western Collector project. Introduce the ordinance and order a public hearing for May 20th, 2013. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
The next item, we moved into a discussion on the waste treatment rates. Staff presented the wastewater utility rate study to the committee. This was something that we had also received in November, explaining that several financing alternatives have been explored, including the WIF grant for the Western Collector that the committee just took care of. Capital expenditures, not operational costs, are driving the rate increases, as well as a significant reduction in consumer usage. It was also reported that Eagle Lake rate issues have currently been resolved. Councilmember Fagerly asked about the possibility of increasing the meter charge to ensure more stable revenue. After extensive discussion, it was determined that Springstead Incorporated would update the rate information utilizing higher meter rates and bring the rate structure back to the Finance Committee meeting on May 13th. So that was for information only. Item number five, now we'll get into the street improvement financing, and there will be four resolutions in this. Again, Kathy Aho of Springstead Incorporated presented information to the committee regarding the proposed 2013 street improvement program financing. Bonds would be issued in the amount of $1.95 million, with interest rates projected at approximately 1.5 percent. After discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll be introducing several resolutions. The first one that I would introduce is a resolution to introduce the ordinance and call for a public hearing on May 20th, 2013.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to introduce the ordinance and call for a public hearing on May 20th, 2013. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
The next one, the final budget for Project 1301 was presented for review and approval. After discussion, there's a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution adopting the final budget for Project 1301 under the 2013 street improvement program.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution adopting the final budget for Project 1301 under the 2013 street improvement program. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero. Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
The final budget for Project 1303 was presented for review and approval. After discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution adopting the final budget for Project 1303 under the 2013 Street Improvement Program.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution adopting the final budget for Project 1303 under the 2013 Street Improvement Program. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
The final budget for Project 1305 was presented for review and approval, and after discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution adopting the final budget for Project 1305 under the 2013 Street Improvement Program.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution adopting the final budget for Project 1305 under the 2013 Street Improvement Program. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Okay, thank you for all that. The next item on our agenda was a 10-year street improvement, or 10-year street program in debt funding history. Finance Director Okens presented information to the committee regarding the 10-year street program. Debt service funds are established to, to collect special assessments and distribute, and disperse principal and interest payments. The Community Investment Fund was first established in 1990 to fund the city's portion of street work after special assessments are applied. The Public Works Fund was established in 2010 to be used for infrastructure and street work and is funded by a utility fee which is currently at $4 per customer. It was also noted that the state legislature is seeking to authorize cities to create street maintenance districts and impose fees to plan and fund street upkeep. After a good discussion, members noted that the current street assessment policy should be reviewed, and we've asked for that to be done. This matter was for information only. The next item were some reports. We looked at the first quarter general fund update, first quarter investment and interest activity, first quarter Rice Trust and March Rice Trust. It was noted that City Clerk Halliday was attempting to contact Bermaner Bank regarding the possibility of the city receiving 2.6% interest on funds deposited there, similarly, similar to what the library in the county has done. That was for information only. Finally, under miscellaneous, Councilmember Johnson asked about ensuring against law enforcement violations of data privacy, which has gained concern across the state. Administrator Stevens stated that staff has taken steps to tighten up policy and procedures and educate employees to deter further violations. That was for information only. Uh, unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report for April 22nd, 2013. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Referring back to item number four, wastewater, or waste treatment rate discussion. Um, I wasn't at the meeting, but I noticed that one of the, uh, rate increases, part of it is due to a significant reduction in consumer usage. I, I know that it takes the same amount of people to run the plant, whether they use five gallons or 10 gallons, but if we have a boom year in the next two, three years and everybody starts using more water and we have industrial park using water, does that mean our rates might go down?
Well, I mean, again, a future, we, we would probably do another rate study and see how that would impact the rates. I mean, it is, it is not just the operational costs that affect the rate structure, but it's very much the debt service at this point, and our rates are currently impacted more by the debt service, which is, you know, paying for the plant itself as well as the infrastructure that's going into the plant. And then that has to be, um, you know, that, that rate has to be developed and spread across the current users, and it does impact, and, and the volume is a piece of that as well. So, I mean, it is why we've done a rate study. It would be something that we would likely, you know, if we see a change in our usage patterns or, you know, you set the rates for two to three years out, that we would do another rate study and see if, how that would, how any changes in usage would impact those rates.
Then my next question would be, what percentage of the problem is the reduction in consumer usage? Is it 5% of the, the revenue that we're missing, or is it 10% or 20 or 30%? Do we know?
In the information that was, that's, that's in the council agenda as well as what Springstead present, and it's the same information that Springs had presented in November, they did go through what the decrease in volume is. I'm sorry that I don't have it off the top of my, off the top of my head here.
I tried to decipher it too, and I couldn't find it.
And so there, you can see, um, I think it is page two or three of the, uh, you should, uh, you can see the usage trends kind of start on page one, and they're showing where the trend is in usage. And then page two is kind of the annual change in, in flow and what was, what we're seeing there. And I can get you, and I, I would, I don't, again, I don't have the specific percentage off the top of my head. I can certainly get that information for you, and we can discuss that at the Finance Committee, and then also get that out to the full council as well.
Part of my concern is, go ahead.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Um, part of my concern is, you know, we're all being taught, you know, go green and use less water, and, uh, there's a penalty for using less water, evidently. I mean, use less water, now you're going to pay more for it. That's why I was curious as to the percentage of the problem that it is. I know JNEO cut back, man, 10, 20, 25%, considerably on the, uh, being more efficient with their water, and then we came with the rate increase and boom, thanks a lot, you know? If somebody could find me the percentage.
Yeah, we can get you that information. I just don't have it with me off the top of my head this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ammon.
I have a question for staff. You know, have there been any meetings since we're looking at a substantial increase? Have we had meetings with any groups or any businesses on the rate structure? Or have there been people inquiring, acquiring about it? And have there been negotiations or have there not been negotiations on this matter?
We have had the rate information since November posted on our website, the Springstead study, so that anybody who wanted to could look at that. The business, uh, one of our large industrial customers contacted us. We met with them to go over and discuss, you know, what was being proposed, but we don't negotiate the rates. We did, um, the city attorney and I did meet with representatives of Eagle Lake because of the contract we have with Eagle Lake and the agreement we have with Eagle Lake to resolve a couple of issues there, and which was the interpretation of that agreement, which affects how the rate is structured for that. But we don't, um, I, I'm not sure I understand the, the question because we don't, we don't negotiate rates one-on-one with business owners or users. It's, you know, we've done a rate study, that information's presented to the council, that information will come back to the council, and the council has to decide how they wish to proceed in terms of setting a public hearing, but all rates are set through a public hearing process and ordinance.
My reason why I was asking that, Ms. Stevens, was, uh, I believe in the past there was negotiations that took place in the last rate increase that was, uh, taken on by the city administrator and one individual, and, uh, our finance director was not involved in negotiations and, uh, discussions. And I, I just think that we should be open and transparent about it. So if there is anything going on, I believe, or I hope that we'll have the opportunity as, as a council, primarily the mayor and the chairman of finance, to sit in on any of those discussions with the appropriate parties. Now, that's, that's my biggest concern, that it be open and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Nelson.
Thank you. We are attempting to be as, as open on this as we can. You know, there's been a little bit of a lag from when it was presented in November. They're continuing to look for, for ways to reduce the, the cost, but this is an open process. There's, there's, nobody is wheeling and dealing, and I, and I'm a little concerned. And I don't want to get into what, what maybe happened 10 years ago, cause, um, but I, I think that everything was pretty much open. But we are definitely moving forward in open and transparent as we can be in this.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the table to, for, to file the Finance Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Public Works Safety Committee report for April 23rd. Councilman Christensen.
I will defer to Councilman Nelson as she was there to chair the committee, and I was gone.
Thank you.
All right. Public Works, Public, uh, Public Works Safety Committee met on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013. We had three items that came before, before us. All of them were for information only, and I will review those with you. Item number one was a presentation of the Central Business District Gateway Concepts. Um, Adam Arvidson presented concepts for the gateways to the Central Business District. These gateways were a specified element on the downtown plan. The gateway areas include First Street and Litchfield Avenue, Third Street and Highway 12, and the area between Seventh Street and Benson Avenue on Highway 12. Gateways to downtown Wilmere are constrained by available right-of-way or public space. The ideas presented were a mix of parts and components, including linear elements or fences, vertical elements or columns, and pavement changes. Other components would be curb alternatives, murals on buildings, and the reduction of sign clutter. Mr. Arvidson conceptually applied each of these components to the three gateways. Aerial photos were viewed showing how the components could be incorporated into each gateway. The Third Street and Highway 12 gateway was viewed with three different concepts inspired by the railroad switching yards, the forest meeting the prairie, and the glacial lakes. The committee offered comments regarding preferences, and unofficial favorite was the railroad concept, and the committee discussed possible materials and colors. The next step will be for Mr. Arvidson to refine, refine the drawings for each gateway, showing the favorite concept along with estimates of cost. This will follow a public, open house planning commission review and public viewing. That was item one, number one for information only. Um, the item number two was the sump pump inspection update. Staff informed the committee that the program to inspect sump pump systems in the, in the Country Club Drive area in southwest Wilmere is complete. One resident remained non-compliant. A letter had been sent informing the property owner that a $100 a day penalty will begin as of May 1st in accordance with the municipal code. And that was for information only. And the third item was miscellaneous. Captain Jim Felk provided an update on parking ticket statistics and offered a report on recent vehicle vandalism. Responding to a request from a committee member, Gary Geiger spoke briefly about the past efforts to survey downtown businesses regarding future plans. That was the, um, items that came before us, and with that, I would enter a motion for, to approve the minutes.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for April 23rd, 2013. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I have aired in the past, I thought there was an opportunity in Public Works to approve the five contracts to the various street projects, and so maybe that would be appropriate to have it done now in Public Works.
In Public Works.
Are you, excuse, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Are you referring to the five contracts with Dunick's?
Correct.
Do they have to be named by number, or just?
They do. If you want.
We don't have them in front of us.
Would you like to make them say?
Here, I can read those.
And there's the number.
I can read those.
Would you please? Okay.
The first contract, uh, the, the first resolution would be to award the bid to Dunick, Inc. of Prinsburg for Project 1301A, and that would be in the amount of $1,300,002, $1,300,000, 1,321,000, $174.20.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded. I can't repeat everything you said.
That would be to award the contract for 130, for Project 1301A in the amount of $1,321,174, $174.20 to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
And the second recommendation from staff is to award the contract for Project 1301B, also to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, uh, Prinsburg, Minnesota, in the amount of $1,241,718.95.
So moved. Second. The motion has been made and seconded to?
To award Project 1301B in the amount of $1,241,718.95 to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
And the staff recommendation on Project 1303A is to award that contract in the amount of $283,681.51 to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
So moved. Second. The motion has been made and seconded to?
Award the contract for Project 1303A in the amount of $283,681.51 to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
And the staff recommendation for Project 1303B is to award that contract in the amount of $373,449.80 to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
So moved. Second. The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to?
Award Project 1303B in the amount of $373,449.80 to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And the staff.
That carries.
And the staff recommendation on Project 1305 is to award that contract in the amount of $88,241, also to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to...
Award Project 1305 in the amount of $88,241,000 to Dunick Incorporated of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Do we have a motion on the table for the...
To approve the minutes, yes.
Yes. Councilman?
One question on item number three. I asked Mr. Geiger and Ms. Doherty, were present at our Public Works meeting, about the request from... that requested that we talk about the efforts of the surveys of downtown. I'm just wondering, has anybody heard, or has anybody from staff found out how we're going to go about that, or has Ms. Doherty from Design Center informed us when the surveys will be taking place as far as the request for the amount of people that need assistance? My point and direction was to find out, first of all, what are the needs of the downtown, what do people want, what are we doing well, what are we doing bad, and what needs to be done to assist them. I know we have done that in the housing, or in the project through the HUD grant for improving some of the property owners downtown. I'm just curious. To get a real handle on it, I think we'll have to have new surveys, because we've had exchange of different clientele and different people and businesses opening downtown, and I'm not sure we're going to be dealing with the issue of the improvements to the downtown that were done by Adam Arvidson soon, and I'm just wondering how this all fits in. That was my primary reason. Bev, she's in the audience tonight, I'm alluding to her. I'm just wondering when that study might be done, or when there is a plan on that to be done.
Mr. Mayor, yes. I believe the conversation that night was that Mr. Geiger had spoke up that they had done one within the last, was it, three years?
Three years.
And so I don't believe there was a discussion about doing another one at that point in time during that meeting.
Well, I brought up the fact that we should be. We can't give the Design Center a direction to do one, but I guess it would be nice to know if there is going to be one taken. I just wanted to make my point. It's pretty hard to make decisions not knowing all the information from the downtown.
Go ahead.
Okay. I believe his comment, and maybe Bev would like to speak to that, was that they had done a complete one, had taken block by block, and had gone to each business to redo that within the last three years. So, right? Okay.
So we would use that one, is that what you're saying?
I just don't think there was another discussion about doing a survey, because one had just been done in the last three years that had contacted each business, so...
Okay. Well, I think my point is that it's been three years, and things change. That's why I think it's important to have one. But that's up to the committee and the Design Center. I serve on that. I'll see if I can wrestle down to maybe getting an update on that, or maybe getting the survey itself, what the needs were in the downtown. I don't think I've been provided that. I don't know if anybody in the council's been given a copy of the needs. Bev, if that's available, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to ask staff on item number one, what sort of feedback we've gotten on the gateway concepts. I know I've talked with Patricia Harding Carter, who had written a letter to the editor, and visiting with her today, she has received a number of calls thanking her for writing the letter, but I'd like to know what the feedback has been for those that have come down to the office for the meeting as far as gateway concepts. Is there a position right now that you can determine from any contacts you've had?
Councilmember Dacken, I wouldn't say there's a position that could be determined, but I can state that the comments that were received at the open house and the discussion at the planning commission were both very positive. We had the concepts up at City Hall for most of last week, then they were moved over to the Goodness Coffee Shop Thursday through Sunday, and today through Wednesday or Thursday, they are over at Heritage Bank, and we are trying to solicit additional comments from the public, people that would visit those locations. And I think this is something so new and different for the downtown, and it is going to generate a lot of discussion, and maybe the exact concept hasn't been hit on yet, but generally, the response to looking at and acknowledging the railroad history in the community has been the prominent theme.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, go. Thank you. Councilman Fagerly, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the street bidding, was there other companies that put bids in?
Yes, there were. Bruce, maybe you can recall how many bids we had on the projects, for the street projects. Dunick was the low bidder in all instances, but we did have some additional, but we had other multiple bids.
Yes, we did, and I don't remember the exact numbers. I think it was consistently three, wasn't it, Kevin?
I believe so, but there were some exceptions.
Yes.
So we had at least, yeah, we did. We had at least three bids and such, and those were discussed at a previous Public Works Committee, actually. I think the actual bids were, and it was presented there. But there were at least, I believe, three, and a minimum of two on each, and Dunick was indeed the low bidder on them all.
Okay.
There was a lot of interest shown with the firm that handles our bid specs and provides the bid packages out to the contractors. A lot of contact made with that company, but for whatever reason, we didn't receive as many bids, certainly as we could have. And I think there was, on some of these, there was nine or 10 different companies that had expressed an interest in getting the bid materials.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman?
They are going to be on display where? The drawings for the...
Through Wednesday or through Thursday morning, probably, by the time I get a chance to retrieve them. They are located at Heritage Bank in downtown Wilmer, so people can stop in there, and there are comment sheets right there to enter their comments on, and those will be collected and provided back to the consultant.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? We have a motion on the table to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee or the, yes, Public Works Safety Committee report for April 23rd, 2013. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Labor Relations Committee report for April 24th, 2013. Councilman Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Labor Relations Committee met Thursday, April 24th, 2013, in Conference Room 1. Those present were myself, Mr. Dacken, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Christensen, Charlene Stevens, Mayor Frank Anish, Andre Nelson, Bruce DeBleek, Tim Johnson, and Councilman Fagerly was absent. Meeting was called a order at 4:45 PM, and at 4:48 PM, Councilman Member Dacken moved to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03 subdivision 3A for the job performance evaluation of the city administrator as outlined in the charter. Councilmember Anderson seconded the motion which carried, and the meeting was reopened and adjourned at 9:09 PM upon a motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. With that, Mr. Mayor, we have a, as required by state statute or by city charter, we have to give the report evaluation at this council meeting, and Mr. Scott has written down a few things. Would you like me just to read it?
Please do.
Okay. Summary conclusions for the evaluation of the performance of Ms. Stevens, city administrator pursuant to statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3. On April 24th, the city council held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of Charlene Stevens, city administrator. In accordance with the governing law at this city council meeting, which is the next open city council meeting following the closed session, the city is required to summarize conclusions of evaluation of the performance of Ms. Stevens reached by the city council at the April 24th, 2013 closed meeting. Conclusions, Ms. Stevens did not request that such meeting be open to the public. As a result, evaluation of Ms. Stevens' performance took place in a closed meeting as required by Minnesota Open Meeting Law and Minnesota Governing Data Privacy Act relating to personnel data. As chair of the Labor Committee of Wilmer City Council, I'll provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the city council from the April 24th evaluation, and that is that Ms. Stevens is performing the duties as required as city administrator. And with that, I'll move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Committee report for April 24th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. The Community Development Committee report for April 25th, 2013. Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is public comments. There was no public comments taken. Number two, business subsidy policy. Staff presented the city of Wilmer business subsidy policy that was adopted in 2004 and amended in 2007. The policy is a statutory requirement for any community that grants business subsidies. The policy was used to guide recommendations for the recent Torgerson project as a tax abatement, as a form of business subsidy. It was noted that the policy currently sets a wage floor of $11 for jobs created by businesses receiving business subsidies. Staff is recommending that the wage floor be adjusted to $12 per hour based on the most recent median city and county hourly wage statistics. After discussion, a motion was made and seconded. Now I'll introduce motion to adjust the wage floor in the business subsidy policy to $12 per hour.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to adjust the wage floor in the business subsidy policy to $12 per hour. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious how we came to $12 an hour. Was that an arbitrary number, or just thought, well, it should be a dollar more, or was there some conversation about that?
There was some conversation. I think the city was at 10:15 on the study, and the county was at 13, and we arrived at $12.
Okay.
This is the minimum. I mean, it can be higher, depending on...
Right. They must meet the minimum.
The type of jobs that would be created.
Okay.
I have a question. I don't know if I can ask this or not, under the new parliamentary procedure. Well, I'll move to suspend the rules and allow the mayor to ask the question.
I think if you have a question, you can ask your question if clear. That's fine.
The question I have is, how does this affect the... what the legislature is trying to do is pass an upper... What if the...
The minimum wage has no bearing on this. This is the floor that the city would set to, in order for the city to consider providing incentives, the job wage would have to be at $12 an hour. It does not, the minimum wage wouldn't play into that necessarily.
So if minimum wage is set at $12 an hour, it doesn't make any difference?
Well, I mean, I think if that were the case, the city could certainly then take a look at its policy and see if it wanted to revise the policy further based upon that. But the $12 is based, as Councilmember Fagerly stated, on looking at the kind of median wage rates for Candy High County and such. So that was the recommendation for the $12 an hour.
Any further discussion? Councilman Amen?
Well, does that deal with health insurance or anything else, or is that just straight $12 an hour? I'm just curious what... I mean, I don't think any of our city employees earn just $12 an hour. With all the benefits, it's much, much more with the health insurance and the pension and everything else. I'm just curious, why $12 an hour? I don't know if anybody pays, the construction industry can pay $12 an hour, but I'm just curious where the $12 came from.
This figure is wages only. It does not include any benefits. The benefits would be in addition to the $12 per hour.
Excuse me. Bruce, Mr. Peterson, does that mean that then $12 is the... But the way it's stated now, $12 would be the very bottom, correct? They wouldn't have to pay anything more than that, correct?
That is the minimum that a company receiving a business subsidy from the city of Wilmer would need to pay its employees at an hourly wage.
It's a minimum. It's not a maximum. They, you know, jobs can certainly be incentivized that are higher than that, and that has been done. If you look at some of the past tax abatements that were done for the Midwest Technology Campus, those jobs would be considerably higher than $12 an hour.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment. I believe that $12 an hour is not a level of wage. I think it should be closer to 14. And I don't, does that include full-time equivalents, or when it comes down to the job numbers, are they going to be including that in their...
Each job numbers are, the job numbers that are required are set per project. There's not a minimum number of jobs by policy. Each project is evaluated, and then the job numbers are set based upon that, and those job numbers are also set as full-time equivalent jobs. So they could be, you know, for instance, in the case of the most recent abatement with Torgerson Properties, those were full-time equivalents. It didn't, was it 30 jobs, Bruce?
Yes.
30 jobs were full-time equivalent. That could be, you know, that could be potentially 60 jobs at half-time, or it could be 30 jobs at full-time, or any combination thereof, as long as there are 30 full-time job, full-time equivalent jobs created.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I was curious, as far as a format or process for this to be handled, I don't know how it's been handled, but is there a written, there's a written request, and is there a fee that they have to provide, and what type of information should be provided with that application? I'm just curious if the committee talked about the information that should be given along with the application, and if there should be an application fee, because it takes a lot of staff time to go through this. I'm just curious if that was discussed, or if there's any interest.
That will be part of the policy proposal that staff brings back to committee.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
No, wait, we're going to adjust the wage for $12.
The motion of $12.
The motion on the floor.
The wage floor to the business to $12.
Right, okay. To adjust, and I think we have a motion on the table, do we now? All those in favor of adjusting the wage floor in the business subsidy policy to $12 per hour?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
One question, I'm sorry, it just came to my mind. One, I think Bruce, you were the chairman of the Community Development Committee many years ago. That was about 10 years ago, wasn't it, the $11 an hour wage rate when it was adjusted?
Yeah, that was...
Or maybe closer to 14 years ago.
2007.
It's, yeah.
2007?
It's in the document, 2007. It's the last adjustment.
We always set it at $10. It was $10 an hour then.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Just a note, in regards to that wage floor, we're planning on looking at yearly, so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. Policy discussion continued with a brief review of the tax increment financing. Review criteria in the TIF policies were used in crafting a recommendation for the Torgerson project. With regard to a possible tax abatement policy, staff recommended that any policy be flexible and follow state statutes. It was also recommended that the review criteria in the tax abatement policy be consistent with the TIF policy. Councilmember Anderson agreed that the city needed to have a flexibility because of the wide range of projects the city could face. He said that it was necessary for the city to have as much discretion as possible. Councilmember Johnson stated that it was a good idea to have an individual policy for tax abatement, and he too liked the idea of flexibility. Councilman Dacken said he agreed with the previous comments, but asked that all decisions and recommendations be documented. Staff stated that written agreements, including subsidy goals and a clawback provision, are part of the current process. Staff will craft a tax abatement policy and return to the committee for a review and comment. Item number three, miscellaneous. The committee discussed the issue of security at the auditorium relative to graffiti, thefts, and unauthorized entrance. Staff told the committee that the 2013 capital improvement budget included $25,000 for doors. The door projects are being bid, and it is hoped that there is money left over for security cameras and a card reader system. I just have a question for Bruce. Have we let out the bids yet on the doors?
The low quote was contacted the end of last week and notified of the fact that they'd submitted the best quote, and they, this week, we're going to be ordering the door system. It's a custom door system that's manufactured for installation.
Okay, and these are on the south side?
That's correct.
Of the auditorium?
So once this third, this is the large three-door system, we'll go ahead and begin taking quotes for the two-door and the one-door systems that also have to go in. We wanted to see where we were going to be at price-wise on the biggest system to give us some comfort level that we had enough money in the budget to cover all three entrances.
Okay, do you think we will?
Yes, and we should have money left over.
Okay, and they should all be done by the startup of fall programs there?
Absolutely.
Okay. I know the community ed talked about it too at their last meeting, so it is a concern.
Yeah, we want to get this done very quickly now that we know where we're at with the large three-door system.
All right, thank you. Another condition was at Regency East, and I think we have some photographs that'll be brought up that Mr. Dacken provided us with. Staff said that with the snow gone, it'll be easier to tour the parks and write up violations, and the building inspector will be doing that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we got some work to do there.
Yes, we went through both the parks the end of last week, and typically, it's a joint effort between our inspection staff and our planning staff, and our planner's been gone for the last week on a honeymoon, so as soon as she gets back, she will be pressed into service.
All right, thank you. And the last... And the last item was a request on parking issues in the area of 11th Street Southeast by the nursing home and Wilmer Avenue, by Waltz and the clinic. People are, employees are parking on the street, so I don't know, will staff be talking with the clinic and the nursing home, asking that employees don't park there?
I'm not really certain what the intent of the referral to Public Works and Public Safety was to accomplish, if it was just to have it on the agenda so property owners could come in and talk to the committee about it. It was brought forward by Councilmember.
I think that was the intent, that they would be coming to forward to Public Works, Public Safety, and explain what their issue and concern is, and then at that point, the staff could.
Okay. So it's been.
See with the direction. Yep.
That will be on the committee agenda for next Tuesday.
All right, thank you. With that, there was no other business, I move to file the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for April 25th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Mayoral proclamation, proclamation, may as Arbor Month. Could you give us a little insight on that, what Arbor Month really means?
Arbor Month is actually something that the city has, City of Wilmer's been designated a Tree City since 1983. It's a requirement of the program to designate at least one month each year as Arbor Month, and so for the past years, the city has chosen the month of May. And again, this is part of participating in the Tree City USA program. It's one of the many requirements. It also, our participation in Tree City USA also recognizes the kind of trees that we plant and the number of plantings, and essentially recognizes our community as a green community in terms of a tree community.
Thank you very much. And I will read the proclamation. The proclamation is, whereas trees offer environmental benefits, conservation, and other additions to Wilmer's quality of life that although not accessible in monetary terms, have a direct impact on citizens' lives. And whereas future generations are dependent upon our continued planting of trees and shrubs, and whereas the City of Wilmer's desires of encouraging all residents to be involved in planting and caring of trees and shrubs, now therefore be resolved that I, Frank Yanish, Mayor of the City of Wilmer, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2013 as Arbor Month in Wilmer, Minnesota, and urge all citizens to recognize and take cognizance of this event. And Charlene, do you want to handle the?
Actually, Councilmember Christensen is prepared to do that, I believe.
Okay.
Sure am. This has to do with the update for merging the city and county HRAs. We tried this three years ago and decided against it mostly because of the county, and this was brought up again last year by our shared director, Jill Bankston. She is presently directing both the HRA, the city and the county. And after a year of doing it, she's come to the conclusion to be a good idea to merge for several reasons. And I asked her to give me a list of pros and cons, and I'll share them with you. Several of the pros are, number one, it would reduce duplication of efforts. She's got many reports and programs that are duplicated between the city and the county HRA. Secondly, it would increase efficiency through reduced duplication, a little more nimble staff, and of course, better utilization of staff and a unified staff. Thirdly, it should reduce some conflicts and confusion among staff because we have different personnel policies. It should also streamline policies and practices now in place. Probably most importantly, it would streamline the service to the customer. They would have one HRA to go to, less confusion on which HRA customers are associated with. Next, it would also free up a lot of time for the executive director so she could engage in strategic planning and visioning. She's working probably 60 hours a week. It'd also have some potential for cost reductions, maybe not immediately, but somewhere in the long run, it's going to reduce costs. And a big item is, it'll give us one tax ID, fewer reports to make, less audits, and more streamlined insurance. Presently, she's doing two reports for, you know, one for each HRA, and audit for each one of them every year, and it takes a lot of time. Some of the cons are reasons why we shouldn't consider the full merger is, a main one is staff uncertainty. People are wondering, will my job be there? You know, when we merge, is it going to be gone? Second one is the process that we are going through. It's slow and tedious to merge these two. It's going to take a year to complete, and lots of meetings, and pouring over a lot of data. There are also questions about, and uncertainty regarding the debt and assets transfer. The city HRA and the county HRA have different assets and different debt, and it occurs through the following years. An important one is that one political entity will give up control if the result is merging the two HRAs into one, and we're presently looking at merging the city into the county, technically speaking. That's what it would be. And I want to give you some differences between the two. Sorry, you're all aware, but the assets, the total net assets of the city HRA is $6.572 million. The total assets of the county HRA is $863,000. Now, they also handle McLeod County's HRA, and their assets are a negative $252,000. Net income, the city's HRA presently is at about $196,000 per year, the county's is Long-term debt, net of current maturities, the city's is $2.2 million, and the county's is $1.61 million. Also, to show you the confusion that they have, because of state and federal regulations, our city HRA has 20 checking accounts to deal with, and 28 savings accounts due to state and federal regulations. The county HRA has eight checking accounts and three savings, and McLeod County has four checking accounts and one savings account. Now, it's a nightmare for a financial person to deal with that, and merging the two was going to help out considerably. Also, the board meetings, presently our shared directors on the second Tuesday every month, going to the Wilmer HRA, on the fourth Wednesday every month, going to Candyohi, and on the fourth Tuesday every month, going to McLeod. Employees, Candyohi County HRA has six full-time, one part-time, for a total of seven. Wilmer HRA has 12 full-time, three contracted, for a total of 15. The city payroll has 26 periods, and the county payroll has 24 periods, and she's dealing with all of this at the same time. So it makes a lot of sense to merge. Some steps that have been taken to date are, we formed a joint work group in January of this year, and it consists of the president and vice president of each HRA, city and county elected liaisons, the HRA executive director, and the city and county administrators. This work group has recommended to HRA to participate in the merger, or in merger discussions, I should say. Candyohi County and City HRA passed independent resolutions agreeing to participate in this merger discussions in January, February this year. We also saw proposals from two groups, Aylers and Springstead, to assist in the merger. It's going to take a lot of data pouring over and seeing how to merge these two. Both HRA governing bodies agreed at last meeting to hire Springstead at a cost of $40,000 to be split between the city and county HRAs. They will provide a project manager services to our operations. We've established the timeframe for the following. We're going to study the merger this year, 2013. We'll present the plan to both the county and the city in January of 2014, and hopefully we can consolidate both of them by July of 2014. Both HRAs have a fiscal year starting in July 1. Some of the next steps we'll be taking is, we'll have a kickoff meeting with Springstead for our staff and the work group. We're going to develop some project milestones, and of course, we're going to collect some data, a lot of data, for them to pour over. If there are any questions, I'm sure open to them. Always, that's my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Councilman Christensen? Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If our director's working that many hours, why are we doing McLeod County when it's not even adjoining?
McLeod County is separate from the city. The Candyohi County HRA has contracted with them to handle their HRA as they don't want to, should I say? We used to handle part of eight, Mekka Counties, or we, the county, Mekka Counties, Section 8 housing also, that is gone presently, but they're handling McLeod Counties. And we're getting paid for it. I mean, the county is, and they're not doing it free.
I understand that.
I think, if I may, Councilmember interject too, and I think that's, that would be a part of, as we go through this study, that would be something that also would be evaluated, that contract with McLeod County, and how that fits in, and if that continues to make sense. But as Councilmember Christensen said, it's a contract that the county HRA has already has entered into currently and has arrangements for, so it's a part of that mix.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The levy, how is the levy going to be calculated? You know, now, the city generates a levy based on their expenses, and the county, I suspect, does the same thing. What will we see in terms of the levy?
Well, that's something I can't tell you, but it'll be discussed, and I'm sure that the city is going to be part of the levy, or either that, or the county's going to increase their levy. But it's to be debated, I guess.
Again, if I may, Councilmember, I think, you know, that is a part of, that's part of the study process and how we look at this, and that is one of the reasons that the groups agreed to engage an outside consultant, because there are a lot of those questions. It requires some technical expertise, there requires some financial expertise to do those projections and look at how that levy would be done. And quite honestly, there aren't a lot of models out there for HRAs that have merged. I mean, when we've looked at, when we started looking at this, we didn't find a lot of examples and modules, or models, so we are kind of plowing some new ground here. But I think that financing mechanism, just as the Councilmember Christensen explained, the kind of assets and debt structure, that has to be part of that equation, and how that would get levied, if it would be a countywide levy, and then how that, if that changes to a countywide levy, how that impacts, you know, residents of the City of Wilmer, as well as how that impacts residents for New London and Spicer as well.
There are zero mergers that have taken place out there between HRA, city and counties. We've looked, and we couldn't find any, because we thought, well, we can maybe ask someone else, how'd you do this? Another difference between our levy and the county's levy, as you notice, their levy is quite a bit less than ours. That's because they put all their administrative costs in the request for funding for their projects. The city, most of our levy is used for the administration of these, of the request for funds. So ours is considerably more than theirs. There's a lot of, lot going on that not many people are aware of. There's just a lot of entanglement that needs to be pulled apart and see how we can. Just imagine merging the debt, you know? Just imagine the nightmare of merging the debt. I mean, there's debt on many different projects out there, and they're in different years, and that's why we need Springstead to come and tell us, now, here's how you.
Here are the options for going.
Merge the debt and the assets. My concern when this whole thing was brought up was, hey, you know, the city's got, you know, six million, six and a half million dollars in net assets, and they got 863. They're getting all these assets. Is it harming the city? Well, after we discussed it, we aren't giving up any, we can't borrow against it. It's, they're both HRAs, and we implemented ours, I think it's 72. But there's no, you know, there's not, we can't do anything with those assets. It's, this is there, and they need to be administered, and the program's administered along with them. So if you could come up with any reasons why we shouldn't, we're open to them. But it's been a lot of discussion.
And I think we're at the very, you know, we're at the early start of the process too. I mean, I think so are, you know, we're very early into the process to be, and so the point was to kind of give an update of where we are and where we think we're going, and I think if you look at the timeframe that the HRAs, and that came from the HRA boards, I mean, they, I think there's a very realistic timeframe in the amount of time it takes to try to look at something this complex, which is really to develop that plan over a year, and then if that plan, if we're able to develop the plan for a merger over the next year, is to even have a six-month timeframe to implement that plan. So we're talking about an 18-month project in total and such, and I think that recognizes the complexity of it, but it certainly is an opportunity perhaps to improve services and efficiencies and work better together.
Councilman, I have a question for you. Did I understand this properly? Is that the city HRA is doing a much better job than the council, than, I'm sorry, than the county HRA?
In what, one aspect? What do you mean they're doing a better job than the county? I guess I'm not following you.
Well.
The shared director is directing both of them.
So my question is, is why does the city, as I understood what you said, why is the city merging with the county? Why isn't the county merging with the city?
Well, that's something that could be discussed also, but it'd be a lot easier. They're out in their building, and they've got the room out there, and all the employees are working out there, both the city and the county, they're working in a shared office. They've been doing as efficient as they could for the last two, three years since they've been out there. I don't see that one is doing better than another, it's just, just because we have more assets. Listen, the number of Section 8 housing in the city is much bigger than in the county. I mean, and market rate housing, I mean, it's all in the City of Wilmer.
And the city, the city HRA also administers a small cities, small cities funding and such, which is different and such, so some of it is just the types of programs being administered are different, and that makes the balance sheets look different. But as Councilmember Christensen said, they both have governing bodies, they both are operating appropriately, and they're run by the same executive director.
The city HRA has done a lot of small cities grants. I mean, from the north side to the east side to, I was a big critic of the HRA when I first decided to go out there and sit on the board, and they do a lot, and Wilmer probably wouldn't look the same if they weren't here for the last 15 years. They've helped out with these small cities grants, do housing projects, some of them are paid back, some of them aren't. They have a lot of programs. I mean, I could list them here, but it would be, it'd take me 15 minutes to list all the programs they're involved in, and they're here, we got to deal with them, we give them a levy, let's make them efficient. That's where I'm coming from, I guess, and.
Thank you, Councilman Christensen, for a good report. We'll move into the update on the Vision 2040. Would that be you, Councilman, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Vision 2040 committee has been meeting pretty much on a regular basis. United Way has been chosen, or they have agreed to be the fiscal agent for the finances of the group and be administering payment of bills and those efforts. Committee has also engaged a contract with Next Generation Consulting in Madison, Wisconsin. They've been hired to facilitate the 2040 planning efforts. With that, Next Generation Consulting, they will be visiting Wilmer, site visits, May 28th to the 30th. During those site visits, they plan to meet with all the steering committee members, that include the city, county, school board officials, young professionals, that would be the new XT, senior citizens, Latinos in the Smiling Community, and the steering committee and other identified stakeholders that they'll also be meeting with. We plan for future workshops to be scheduled in June, and developing the actual plan based, we'll be developing the actual plan for the 2040 effort based on feedback, and that will occur in July and August, so. And hopefully, completing the plan in early fall, enrolling it out early fall of 2013. First of all, we're trying to benchmark the greater Wilmer community as far as.
First of all, we're trying to benchmark the greater Wilmer community as far as vitality, earning, learning, social capital, cost of lifestyle, after-hours, what and where do you do in Wilmer, and around the town? Is it easy to get around town where you want to go? We'll be benchmarking ourselves against other communities in South Minnesota and one in South Dakota. That would be Hutchinson, Owatonna, Alexandria, St. Cloud were chosen to benchmark against, and Watertown, South Dakota. The goal of this is to involve the community, the greater Wilmer community, to develop a roadmap of what kind of community you want to be going forward for the next 20 years, and what kind of community you want for our children and our grandchildren, so. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Councilmen Blake? Hearing none, well, thank you, Councilman, for your report.
Thank you. I think it's an exciting effort, and I think we all look forward to meeting with the community on that.
With that, we'll move into the announcement of the council meeting dates. Councilman Anderson?
Finance will meet Monday, the 13th, at 4:45.
Councilmember Christensen?
Public Works, Public Safety, Tuesday, May 14th, 4:45 p.m.
And Councilman Almond, labor?
No labor scheduled.
Actually, Councilman Almond, we are looking at the 15th.
15th? We have some responses on, okay.
Councilman?
Yep.
Councilman Tagerly?
No meeting.
No meeting? Is there any, I see we've changed this a little bit, any old business or new business?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. Recently, we had the loss of 30 or more jobs with Molinar. Excuse me, I injured my rib, hard for me to talk. Anyway, to be proactive in this case, I know that we discussed this, Mr. Anderson, with the county commissioners at the EDC meeting, and I'm just curious if the council is interested in having a plan of action implemented and discussed, either with the, to deal with these catastrophes and loss of jobs. Also, we talked about tax abatement. Tax abatement to maintain jobs in our community and to keep people here and keep their livelihood is very important. And I'm just, I think that as a committee, and as a group, and as a council, that we should be leaders in this issue and assist any way we can with keeping those jobs in our community. I know it's not always, not always possible, and Mr. Rehnquist and Mr. Peterson, I think met with him also, but when this, when this type of information is brought up or brought forward, it should be an action alert. It should be number one priority of our city. And I know staff is busy and these things come up. I think the mayor should be notified about this, and there should be an immediate meeting to see how we can assist with any business that's going to be leaving, I think it was more than 30 jobs, it was closer to 80, wasn't it?
Not sure.
I just think a plan of action would be a good step for this council to take to at least implement a plan so we have a strategy in place when it comes up, and who the players will be, and I think it'd be a good, good plan of action, and I'd just like to make that as a recommendation or thought to refer to staff and the appropriate committee.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson, do you have any comment to make on that?
In a typical situation, when we become aware of activities by a company that would indicate that they're looking to make a major reduction in workforce or close up shop completely in the community, we do move rapidly to meet with these companies. The EDC has a process in place, and quite frankly, they're the economic development group charged by the city to represent us on those issues. Mr. Rehnquist and I do communicate multiple times a week, and we do have these discussions, and when necessary, we do have these meetings with the companies. We can certainly look at putting something together so that we have a response plan, but I think usually what happens is, each situation is so unique that we have to almost fly by the seat of our pants and get out there and talk to the people, and we're always aware of what we can put on the table and offer to a company, you know, in the way of assistance, whether it's technical assistance, financial assistance. Usually, by the time it gets to be public, they've made a business decision, and there's, quite frankly, very little the local community can do unless we had the financial wherewithal to step in and make a huge contribution financially to the company. And, you know, in the case of Molinar's, that just wasn't the case. The company that purchased Molinar's a few years ago decided they weren't the best fit for them to continue to own, and they went out and found another company that they thought would own and operate them as a better fit and be a better part of their overall corporate structure, and-
Will a policy on tax abatement help?
It'd just clarify what, you know, whether or not it's a tool that could be used. You know, it's not going to hurt in that particular situation.
Mr. Councilman? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if we got really creative, just to follow up on what Councilmember Almond was saying. Are there some additional tools that we need in our toolbox? And I don't know what they would be, but, you know, I think we need to look at that, because it is a loss. I mean, it hurts our, it hurts our community, it hurts the families that lost their jobs. So I guess I would just add to what Councilmember Almond was saying, and is if you can think of additional things that we could and should be doing, you know?
I think we can have that discussion with the, with the economic development director in the EDC, and some of that is, you know, it's appropriate to have that discussion at the EDC level, because as Mr. Peterson said, they're the group that the city and the county have tried to kind of, given the primary task of economic development, which includes job creation and job retention. But it certainly is something that we can, at the staff level with the EDC director and at the county level, talk about what the tools are that the community has available to it, and if those tools are enough to compete.
We have a business retention committee at the EDC, and we're constantly looking at adding different tools, looking at tools that other communities use, and making some determinations as to whether or not it's appropriate that we try to adapt those particular tools for use in the City of Wilmer, Caney High County. So economic development tools are a dying breed, so to speak. The offerings are not near as abundant as they were 15 or 20 years ago, but yet there are still some certain tools that can be used, and we will have those discussions.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Almond?
Well, I think there's a few other things that I appreciate and applaud all the efforts that have been taken, but you mentioned something, Bruce, that really, I know how business, larger businesses operate, and they make decisions quick. We also have to plan, have a plan of action so we can respond quickly to. By authorizing, you know, Bruce said that he knows, or Steve Rehnquist knows, the limits of what we can offer. We should have, or we should know as a council what we're willing to offer. As soon as that information is brought out there, we should know the financial impact that it's going to have on the community. That's going to weigh our decision. If we have 80 jobs at $40,000 an hour, how that multiplies in the community, we know what the financial impact is. So now that, we didn't have that information, we're not aware of that information, maybe Mr. Rehnquist did, he didn't at the meeting, but he said he's going to get it from me. I would think that'd be the very first thing you should know before you sit down and talk with these people. So I think we need to clean it up a little bit. I think we need to have, we need to in a case like this, the American Call and Emergency Meeting and the Council, Bruce, and we could be brief of Mr. Rehnquist and yourself. I think a plan of action that's aggressive should be, should be taking place, and I think if we can move on that, it would, we'd learn from our experiences. Unfortunately, we weren't able to, of nobody's, nobody's fault here, I'm not trying to put fault on anybody, but if this happens, it can happen to our community again, and I'd just like to be better prepared. And I agree with your thoughts, Bruce.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.